When you, it's difficult to keep concentration, so please take part in everything. Try to keep your contributions concise. When you wish to speak, please raise your hand physically and the host will unmute you. And similarly, when you wish to vote on something, please raise your hand physically. If there is any unruly behaviour that then you will be warned and if it continues, the host will be able to remove any whichever of us from the meeting. I'm going to ask for a roll call so that people watching know exactly who we are. So I'm going to start at the top. councillor Dawson?
Yes.
Councillor Mary Louden?
Yes.
Councillor Ross Prowse?
Yes.
Councillor Lisa Main? Councillor Wrigley?
Present.
Councillor Taylor?
Yes.
Councillor Foden, the mayor? Thank you. Right, we're going to start now then on page three. Declarations of interest, please. Do we have any?
No, no chairman.
Declarations of interest. We'll take items two and three and four as read. Item five, mobile phones. Yes, we want to restrict any interruptions obviously during this meeting, particularly since we're in our home environment. Thank you. The item six, recording, this meeting is being recorded and it is also being streamed live on YouTube. Item seven, public participation. Do we have any members of the public at this meeting, host?
No, chair, we don't.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll go on to the agenda, part one. And before we start, I would like to ask if you would approve that item nine on the agenda and item eight on the agenda change places. So we take item nine first and item eight second. Can you raise your hands if you are in agreement with that, please? Thank you. Right, well, we will start. Apologies for absence, please.
We have apologies from councillor Woods and councillor James.
Thank you. To receive and consider requests for dispensations. Do we have any?
I haven't received any, chair, thank you.
Declarations of interest. Anybody wish to declare an interest in any item? No. Minutes. I hope that you've all read or remember from the last meeting. And I would ask, please, that you approve and adopt the minutes of the meeting on the 16th of September. Could you raise your hands if you approve, please? Thank you. Unanimous, thank you. Right, we now have projects report from our project officer Angie. She is having difficulty with a lot of things due to the current ongoing circumstances. So she's going to update you on those things where she's made some progress. Over to you, Angie.
Thank you, chair. Information from councillor Prowse on the walls around Oakland's Park Estate. This has now been taken up with John Clackworthy and we are awaiting a further response from him on the issues raised about the walls and the pavements, et cetera. But that's in hand. Continuing to receive responses to the town and parish audit. And I'm happy to receive more from councillors to add into that. But one of the items which has been dealt with, which councillors may be interested in, is councillor Woods had raised the routes that the road sweeper took through the town and whether they could be varied. I've had a long detailed discussion with Steve Rampage of Teambridge District Council. And he has indicated there are, the road sweeper operates in two ways. There's some regulated routes in Dawlish which happen on a daily basis, which were set out many years and were part of an agreement. And these cannot be changed easily, which is where councillor Woods had hoped some changes could be made. However, there are secondary routes that run every two to three weeks for which Teambridge would be happy for us to suggest places where they could be swept and include them on their route. It obviously depends, it would take a period of time and they would add them when the road sweeper on the secondary route is due to be in the area. So for example, the road sweeper on the secondary routes is here this week on Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. And if we had made suggestions, they would have incorporated those into those secondary routes that they run. So I would say to councillors, if they have particular areas they would like to be included, if they would like to send them to the office and then they can be forwarded on to Teambridge. But it's a positive action that we've reached agreement on. And we also have a list from the Teambridge District Council in some detail now of the routes that are covered on the regular, regulated basis. So we know exactly where the road sweeper is going.
And if I might just add, it will be a good idea if we think of this in areas of the parish. For example, Cockwood and Cofden, Dawlish Warren and Holcombe, as well as just the town itself, Dawlish. So if you have particular information about those areas which you have close information on, Angie can use that to put into appropriate routes. Councillor Prowse?
Can you hear me? Yes. As to Holcombe, I've been around it several times in the last seven days. And as you know, we've got very large lorries going up and down there at the moment. I'm not certain that we can include anything just at the moment, chairman. And I'm not saying in the future we can't, but the size of some of the lorries, I met one myself this week. And well, it could just about get up the road. So somebody somewhere along the line is going to have a big bill, I would have thought, for repairs to road pavement and even to houses.
Yes, that's worth noting. The damage has been followed up in the past. There is some concern about it. Thank you. Yes, back to Angie.
There's only one other item to report is we've been having ongoing discussions with the new PC neighbourhood beat manager for Dawlish Warren. He's actually for the rural areas and councillor Main will be aware of this, pushing for some of the actions that the CAC asked for. And to date, I've not had any further responses from Barry Seeger. I don't know whether councillor Main may have had more to update. That's all I have to report in from the project side.
Councillor Prowse?
I'm not certain, chairman, whether this is the right time to bring it up. But Angie, I did speak to you, I presume it was at the last, to be honest with you, I can't remember which meeting, about a community fridge. And I gather that Mark, Mark is in, I'm trying to think of his surname. That's right, thank you. Mark Jones is in communication with Devon County, who are the fund holders looking into doing something on this matter.
I believe councillor Prowse that Mark Jones sent out a message to us all this week on those very subjects. Yes, Angie?
If I just may update the chairman, there's been some further discussions about having the fridge. And at the moment, they've decided not to pursue that angle with Devon County or in particular the fridge. The larder is still there for a number of different reasons, but it's still on the radar as a future possibility as part of the network.
Thank you, Angie. I believe we've also got a little information about the bench on Sandy Lane that we do know that we agreed at the last meeting to some additional costs. We know that the bench was going in last week. I'm not sure. I haven't been there today. Have you, Angie?
As far as I'm aware, it's not in situ yet. All I can say is that my understanding was they were going to lay the concrete, but I've not heard any further. And the lady that normally tells us it's been, it might have been installed, hasn't been in contact.
But it's ongoing and it definitely is going ahead now. And another thing, we hadn't had any further action about our inquiries about another island in the Broke and various complications to do with Brooklyn's house and so forth. That is all in the hands of various responsible authorities now.
Yes, chair.
Is that, that is the end of your report, is it? Dawlish Waterfowl. And I know that we all love the swans, of course, and we've got an update here, which I'm sure that Angie would like to go through for us, Angie.
It's not, chairman, it's written with obviously Don. But I thought it might be useful just to share my screen for three items that are actually mentioned in the report, which have been funded or in situ. So I'm going to share my screen and I just hope this is, you're going to see what I'm going to show you. Hopefully you can see the first. Hopefully you can see that. Thank you. That is the new sign that's gone up, that was approved. It has the Latin names, the QR code and everything. And as you can see, this is actually from a Facebook page. And a member of the public has already commented, it's a lovely new information poster along the Broke. So
It's nice.
It's gone quite well. Secondly, we also, I hope this is changed on your screen. You can see the new, please help protect our waterfowl by not fishing in the Broke signs. Okay, and the final thing is, as mentioned in the report, Black Swan Cam is now live. And we were actually featured on BBC Spotlight the other evening. And basically we have a website, this is it. And you can actually I had a feeling that was going to happen. As soon as it plays on the actual website, you get a little introduction and then it goes into the live stream. But that is all active and working.
And I would congratulate you, Angie, on the hard work you've put into all these things. And I only hope no one queries any Latin names on that board.
I do believe, chairman, that you checked them.
Several times, still. And the colours of the swans as well. So everything's going well down there by the look of it. And those new signs, I think, are absolutely lovely. And I'm sure the visitors are going to like them too. So anyone else want to make any comments about the waterfowl? Yes, councillor Wrigley?
Thank you, chair. I'd just like to congratulate Angie on the positivity of that sign. It looks and reads very nicely positive. Thank you for that.
Agreed. Thank you. Thank you councillor Wrigley. Anyone else? No. So we can move on to
Could you just note the report, chair, please?
Oh, I beg your pardon. Are we happy to note that report? Thank you. Yes, all agreed. Brunswick allotments, we've had a late one, which I'm able to get out in time and Angie will just give you a precis of it.
Yes, chair, we haven't had time to reply to this in detail from BB allotment association. They sent us an email in some detail and it's extremely positive, basically saying how productive the allotments have been, that the planned awning will be installed hopefully fairly soon. And they thank the council for the ongoing financial support. The new agreement that the committee signed off at the last meeting. They haven't had a lot of feedback, but most were very supportive. They've made some comments about some other bits, such as the wildlife corridors and things that need to be taken up with the clerk. But they end off their email with a really positive comment, which is, and finally, thank you for the continued support that CAC and DTC have generously given to a resource that we recognise as a potential flagship and positive asset for the town. But the clerk will be responding in due course.
That is very nice to have that kind of response. I would just add that they might not even have noticed, but the council has spent a considerable amount of money recently on upgrading, replacing the water supply pipeworks and so forth. Quite a substantial sum of money, which is also for their benefit. But it's one of the things we have to do. We're responsible for that field and the allotments. Anybody else wish to say anything else on that? Are you happy to note and receive this report? Thank you. So we agreed that we will now transpose number nine and number eight. So we're going to go on first to the lights on the Brunswick tree. And you will see that Angie has prepared a report on this. She's had a lot of work to do with lights, I'm afraid, for various reasons. All the plans as to what was going to happen with new lights and extra lights and all kinds of things have rather gone awry for all the obvious difficulties this year. But she's still coming up with some good ideas. Over to you, Angie.
Thank you, chairman. I do apologize, this report was late coming out on earlier in the week. The recommendation of the report is not to light the lights on the Brunswick tree this year because we've not been able to go out for quotes at this stage. The lights came off, they were just not usable. There were certain vintages, there were actually different sets that came off. And as I say, we went back to the current contractor, asked them to quote. And it is a considerable amount of money and we would advise that it should go to tender and perhaps look at alternatives for Brunswick Place. The reason for saying that is, there have also been discussions about the whole of Brunswick Place. Because although you couldn't have our festoon lighting down there, there is potential for having spiralling lighting down each lamppost. But I'm still in long discussions with Devon County to not be able to give you any real details on that. I think it is also advisable to say to councillors, in case anyone should misconstrue, we still intend to put the lights on down the cutinery lights, you know, the festoon lights on. This is purely the lights on the tree, on the Brunswick, next to the waterfowl compound. And it has also been suggested that if we did not light the tree, there are obviously issues then about perhaps the imperative for the brook lights and whether as a council, we could also look at perhaps lighting the waterfowl compound. So there are two issues there. But as I say, I've asked councillors to consider the report and agree not to relight it for this year. There is also some concern that as the tree is splaying out, if we did invest all this money in the lights going back up, they may not show to their best ability after a shorter period of time. The potential for uplighting is not there because the tables and chairs and everything is so close to that area. It doesn't look to be a good area for uplighting. I hope that helps, chair.
We've had quite a few problems with the lighting now. We did set aside money in the budget for festive lighting and a lot of that, you will hear shortly, has got into difficulties. Am I right in saying, Angie, that we also have problems in that lights are way up north, our contractor?
Yep, our contractor is based in Manchester. At the current time, we foresee no difficulties with him coming on the 22nd of November or around that time to come and install the lighting. And because obviously there isn't a light switch on, if there had to be some slippage of a few days either way, it would actually not be as calamitous as it might have been in a previous year. And also, we're not publicising the light switch on. So to some extent, if it had to be slightly later or earlier, it's what a lot of councils have actively decided to do, to change the date specifically to avoid a mass gathering.
So, thank you. I will open this up for discussion now. Yes, councillor Wrigley?
Thank you, chair. Just for clarity, I think we talked about doing a large Christmas tree. Is that still still on the cards or has that hit problems too?
At the current time, through the events committee, we are still pursuing the three items for Christmas, one of which is the tree near or approximately the bandstand. At the moment, I have one current quote. I'm trying to obtain more. And I'm having substantial difficulties in speaking to the right people at Teambridge to obtain the necessary information that I require. And I'm having further meetings next week. But it is hoped that obviously that will happen. But it's not a certainty. I'll be completely honest about that. But it is hoped that we could do it either in the proximity of the bandstand because of the electrical source. The other things that are planned as part of the events committee, which is the nativity scene, which is now looking to be on a float, and the virtual Santa Claus are actually going to happen. So it's just the tree, that's the one of the three that is currently not 100% in the bag.
I would thank you, Angie, for all the work you're putting into this. I know that you are looking at all kinds of options and opportunities to ensure that something takes place. Yes, councillor Wrigley?
Sorry, I was just going to follow up. If there's anything I can do to help facilitate getting into contact with the right people at Teambridge, please do let me know and I will do what I can and talk to the PH because I presume this is in the grounds maintenance type sort of area, sorts of people.
It is state, yeah.
Oh, estates, okay.
Thank you councillor Wrigley, that would be very helpful. I'm sure you all would like to say something about this. We're all very keen on our lighting. So who would like to speak next? No one? I hope that you have been able to study this and you've seen some of the horrific figures. You will see that there was a substantial budget set for festive and decorative lighting because we were hoping to get additional lighting at Tuck's plot. That's all been set aside again because Devon County haven't got anywhere with their lighting. And Mary Louden will be aware of this. This has been going on for some years now. So it's a difficult situation. Yes, councillor Wrigley?
Sorry, chair, just to clarify. So the report is saying that we don't like the tree for this year. Look into the solutions in more detail next year. Is it worthwhile creating a specific working group that can help look into that? Or scheduling CAC meetings where we can make sure this happens earlier in the year? So we have time to progress it forward rather than leaving it later. But
Yes.
If we push it forward next year and don't leave it until late in the year, then I think it's an extremely sensible proposal that has been put forward. And I would like to propose that we the recommendation.
Can I wait, just let councillor Prowse speak and then Angie, please? You're muted. Can you unmute, please, Angie?
I'm having some difficulty. I've asked councillor Prowse to unmute it just.
How's that?
That's super, thank you.
You're here now.
I don't know why it did it because I didn't touch anything. I was just going to actually agree that this should be looked into earlier. And as you said, chairman, councillor Louden will remember that we always had a lighting working party and the recommendations and everything, all the spend was always organised by September and give us plenty of chance to sort everything out. So I personally would like to see this item, it might seem a bit strange to be talking Christmas lighting, but I'd like to be talking about it in January and February.
I would just wish to add, I will pass to Angie in a moment, but I would just like to point out that this was all brought forward at the time of setting the budget. And it has been worked on ever since. The problem is with all the unusual circumstances and the fact that things have turned out to be broken that we didn't know about. That's why it's gone backwards. I'll put you on to Angie, project officer.
Yes, chair, I'd just like to reiterate that. I mean fundamentally, all of this was planned for March. And my report in particular, the last line before section two, says since March 2020, I've written repeatedly to TDC seeking answers on advice and tree lights and have had no response. But it has been complicated enormously by the lockdown, by staff being furloughed in councils. And to get a reply is incredibly difficult on any front to do with either roads, highways, et cetera, or on the estate side. And I don't think it's unknown, but I would say that my ideal world, this would have been well sorted by, as councillor Prowse says, September. And I would have slept a lot easier, definitely.
I think I'm right in saying that it was all on course until the world went wrong. But I know that Angie is still working on short term things to try to bring some sort of festive cheer to the town. Anything else? Anyone else like to say something on this agenda item? Yes, councillor Louden? You're muted?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
But I'm just going to comment that meeting after meeting, I seem to be listening to the last few weeks. It's been that people are trying to contact and get information from TDC and they're not getting anywhere. And I think I would really like somebody to look into that. Because I was listening to something yesterday and it was the same thing at the meeting. We're having that problem here. Other towns are most probably having the same. So that's my comment.
Councillor Wrigley?
As portfolio holder, if I can just change hats for a moment, that actually comes under my portfolio at Teambridge. I agree with you entirely. If I can have any examples of this, it would help in terms of what I can do at Teambridge to fix it. Because I need to, part of the issue is I need to demonstrate that there is a problem before I can get resources in place to fix such a problem. So yes, please, any examples of failing to get information, failing to get responses? Please send them to me. I can't promise to fix them, but I can promise to use them in evidence to try to get the solution fixed on a systematic scale.
Thank you councillor Wrigley. I think you'll find it comes up in the next agenda item too. There have been a lot of problems. Right, if no one else wishes to speak on this, and I'm sure that you all read it and looked at the costs and the proposal, that we don't like it this year. Would we go back, I think councillor Wrigley, that you were about to propose that we did just that?
I did propose that we accept the report and that we put this on the agenda for progression in the early in the next year or consider pulling together a working group. I think this is one of the areas where councillor Prowse and I are of a similar mind, which is always concerning. And it means that it's probably necessary.
Councillor Louden, were you offering to second that?
I was, yes.
Right, so we have a proposer and a seconder that we accept this report and agree that we do not relight the Brunswick tree this year, just this year. Is everyone in agreement, please? Would you raise your hands if you are? Thank you. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. It's sad, but it's just one of these things, lots of one of these things this year. So now we'll go on to what would have been item eight, which is the brook lights. Now, I know we have another report on that. I know that councillor Wrigley has responded, but we're going to come back to the problems that we were just speaking about a moment ago. So I will ask Angie here to enlighten us, if you pardon the pun.
Chair, as far as I'm aware, the town clerk has not received any firm details on figures that were asked for, but councillor Wrigley probably can give more detail as he's been in direct discussions with the town clerk.
I had conversations with the clerk, I had conversations at Teambridge, other than sitting in on the meetings and metaphorically banging heads together. I'm not sure what else I can do. I'm sure our side doesn't need any head banging. But it's, I was hoping to have heard that some meetings had taken place and apparently not, so. Okay, I was unaware that meetings hadn't taken place. I was hoping when I saw this on the agenda that we had some results to talk about.
Would it be fair, councillor Wrigley, to think that they must have figures for past years? Especially as the cost of running the lights, for example?
I don't know. It depends how it's fed. They may not have separated out the specific costs for these things. And so if we're asking them for detailed costs, they may not have it metered in a way that they feel they can rely upon it. But I'm speculating entirely there. So without further information, I can't tell. So I'd have to go in and ask some more. I had asked for all of that to be done and the portfolio had a great portfolio holder had agreed. And that was some while ago now. So I spoke to the portfolio holder who agreed. I spoke to the clerk who understood what I'd spoken to the portfolio holder about. And I'd hope that that would then proceed smoothly between offices, but clearly that hasn't happened. and I'd hoped that that would then proceed smoothly between offices, but clearly that hasn't happened.
I will come to you councillor Dawson, but I believe Angie just wanted to come up with some points there. Yes Angie?
Sorry, I thought you were going to go to councillor Dawson. Just to say, before the resorts manager, the resorts manager is currently on maternity leave, before she left on maternity leave, she'd had the figures and she had broken them down, she just couldn't pass them on to us at that stage. So I think the figures are available, it was used discussions that were going on. So I think the work potentially has been done, we just have not had access to them yet.
And obviously we need them, because if we're going to have to consider paying for it, we need to know what we're letting ourselves in for. Councillor Dawson?
I think Angie's answered some of my questions, I was just going to say how frustrating it is that if a council's made a cut due to cost reasons, you'd kind of expect those costs to be made available to those it has a massive impact on. And I just think it's really disappointing for the town, looking at the loss of other lights and things and the loss of everything this year, that those lights have gone and I would have wanted to see them on continuously. Like, I think it's had a massive impact on this town, I'm really disappointed.
It has, I know that it has been made clear that we were not happy with the fact that they were turned off and that we had no notice and at the moment we still just don't have enough information. Yes councillor Prowse? You're muted.
Right, I'm very disappointed about this. Our greatest feature is our swans, our waterfowl. The whole centre of that part of the town revolves around the water and to not have any lighting there is very sad. I would say, and I'm sure that, I don't expect agreement about this, that we as a town don't ask of a great deal in the way of public. Well, I don't think money is the word I'm talking about, but I just feel that this is something that Teambridge should really be supporting us in and they don't appear to be.
Thank you.
Councillor Wrigley is shaking, he's agreeing with me, so it's quite a serious matter.
Anyone else wish to contribute? Yes councillor Taylor?
I agree also with councillors Wrigley and Prowse, I'd really like to see these lights lit and if there's a cost issue, then surely that's an issue that we should become involved in. And if there is a price that is to be exacted, then that's for us to consider rather than for Teambridge to consider on our behalf.
Thank you councillor Mayne.
I'm always saying that the Warren gets pushed to one side and forgotten about, but as I'm sat here now, I could look out my window and see the decorative lighting on at the Warren and there's nobody there to see it. Dawlish is the jewel in our crown, everybody drives by or walks by. It's a shame that we've got nothing going on there. And I can't understand why this goes on until, I think it's about two o'clock in the morning, the lights are still on. Why that's allowed and Dawlish hasn't got it.
Any other comments? Yes councillor Taylor?
We probably wouldn't want to report that Dawlish Warren have got its lights still on, but I would like to propose that we write to Teambridge and ask them what the costs are and for us to be offered, to be able to have them switched on at our cost if needs be.
Councillor Taylor, I would just say that this is exactly what has been asked of Teambridge. This is exactly what we were hoping to be able to consider, but we have no facts and figures on which to base a decision. Councillor Foden?
Thank you, I'd just like to say it's even more important that we get these lights switched back on now. Now that even more eyes all around the world are on Dawlish and while Black Swan cam is circulating around the waterfowl on the brook, those lights are very obviously not switched on. So I think it's even more important that we chase this up, thank you.
Thank you, it's just unfortunate that Teambridge have made it clear they've switched them off and that's it, they're not switching them on, so we desperately need this information. Councillor Wrigley?
With the permission of the clerk, I will interfere with the conversations and go and make sure that somebody talks to somebody at Teambridge.
I would like to make a proposal from the chair that we accept councillor Wrigley's offer to go and take this up and try to get some answers for us, so that we can at least make a decision. And before long, because the festive season is fast approaching and the dark nights are with us. Would anyone, well I don't need a seconder from here, but are you happy with that proposal? Thank you, that's carried. I know that was to consider, to receive and note an update, which could you just agree that you have read and received the update? Thank you. It's a very sad, sad situation and people expect us to be able to do things, but we have to follow protocol, we just get caught up in a web sometimes. So are you happy to go on to item 10, benches on the cliff path? Right, to consider offering the benches to Timbridge District Council to relocate on Lee Mount. You might recall that we've already done, agreed an exchange with Teambridge for one of those benches, in exchange for one of the nice green ones, which is the one we're anticipating will be installed up at Sandy Lane in the not-too-distant future. However, there are, I think, is it another three Angie down there? Which are simple wooden benches, they don't really, not as nice as the green ones. However, it's a shame to have them there doing nothing. So you're asked to consider this, please. Anyone like to start the discussion or conversation? Yes councillor Prowse?
Am I unmuted? Yes. Chairman, you just said they were wooden benches that we are talking about.
They're very simple, they're just slats.
Yeah, well I'm sure you're well aware of it, but along the main A379 coming out of Dawlish towards Tinmouth, we've had quite a lot of problems with wooden benches, that they tend to deteriorate quite fast, especially with the weather as we are having now. I would be very happy if Teambridge took over the benches, because then if they rot, they would be responsible for replacing them. But I have my grave doubts that they would be replaced, because we seem to be having financial problems in lots of areas. I'd have no problems with offering the benches to Teambridge in the hope that we get some more nice green ones back, which are not likely to rot quite so quickly.
Anyone else like to contribute? I would just say that it would not be a huge cost if they wished to relocate those to Lee Mount, because all the bases are still there. I counted them once, I think there were about 15 bases and three or four benches. So really the ball would be in their court if you decide to follow this consideration, to make this offer. Yes councillor Lather?
To clarify, will we be putting a proposal and having a second to do this? If we are, I propose that we carry on and do it.
Would anyone like to second that? Councillor Prowse will second that. Is everyone agreed that we offer these remaining benches to Timbridge District Council to relocate Lee Mount or as they wish really, but as on item 10? Everyone in favour? No? Yes? Yes, everyone's in favour, thank you. Oh dear, now we have a rather contentious one and a sad one. Item 11, rural skips service. There is a report on this, to consider the report and determine the level of service the council wishes to offer with the decision to be referred to the appropriate committee as required. I would just outline, we have circulated the link to the YouTube recording of the Timbridge meeting where their decision was called in. If you could sit and watch it that long, but there were a lot of perfectly sensible points made. But whether that makes any difference with the financial situation that Timbridge are in, I rather doubt. You have the costs in front of you. We have to, just bearing in mind with all these things we're thinking, we have to bear in mind that our income has dropped a lot this year as well. Although our precept of course is another thing which can be decided at the budget meetings. I believe, before I come to you councillor Wrigley, I believe Angie would like to add something further to the report.
Yes, if I may Chairman. One thing to say, which isn't in this report and I do apologise for, is that the council contributed to the skips that were taking place at Sandy Lane, Barton Hill and Dawlish Warren. And it was agreed at FNGP earlier in the year, our contribution that Teambridge had asked for was £6,183.42 for the three sites. That figure is not the total figure which is shown if you add up the three figures from Teambridge for the provision of containers and associated staffing. So the total figure there is actually £8,789 roughly. So there is obviously a difference, even though these are reduced costs that Teambridge had through their contract, we only paid £6,183 of that total cost and there was a residue of disposal costs that were paid by DCC. So there is actually a £2,600 difference from what we would have been paying based on that contract. The indication is that these, any new arrangements would not be potentially obtain the same level of discount that had been obtained previously. And obviously separate to that, there is the quote that we had for Coronation Avenue, which was £3,052. Would just like to add that the clerk and the finance officer are obviously querying with Teambridge, having the money refunded from Teambridge of the £6,100 or checking the basis of that, because obviously none of the skips would have taken place this year and they were scheduled for June, November and next March. So even if some of that was not cancelled, there is a long lead in time for at least the March skip. So just to make clear, which I'm sorry, it's not totally clear in the paper, we were making a contribution to the three at the lever of just over £6,000. But here in the table it gives you more realistic forecasts, although they are discounted.
I would just add that we had started at our own cost to provide a skip in the South West Ward based at Coronation Avenue, which we'd never done before, but they only had one, it fell through last time because of the Covid situation and now it's fallen through again for obvious reasons. And as I represent the South West Ward and together with others of you, I'm anxious that with any future decisions, they are included. Yes, now I think it was councillor Prowse who put her hand up, no councillor Wrigley first, yes.
Thank you Chair, I think there's a couple of things to think about here. And thank you to Angie for clarifying that we were already contributing the bulk of two thirds, three quarters, something like that of the funds towards the different things. And I agree with you Chair about including the one at the Coronation Avenue car park, wasn't it?
Yes.
Was the other proposed one. To me, this is an issue about next year, not about this year. I think that it is unlikely that we will get anything together for this year and the idea of trying to provide this sort of service under Covid-19 safe principles seems a little bit unreasonable, unrealistic shall we say. Whether that still applies in March or not, we don't yet know. But I think we should be thinking about this as a service for next year and whether we wish to look at it. Secondly, it's worth noting that I suspect there will be other parishes and towns that wish to continue with this service as well. And in terms of getting the price for a collective service, we should work towards working with those other towns and parishes, not only to establish the timetable, because last time we had problems with timetabling the extra skip, but also in terms of getting a group purchasing a deal together. And I'm hoping that Teambridge will help and enable that, or at least help the council, one of the councils to take a lead in doing that. There was certainly interest from, I think it was Bobby Tracy in the debate.
Thank you, I think councillor Taylor and then councillor Prowse?
Sorry, can I?
Sorry.
I haven't quite finished. So it's a matter of determining whether we wish to continue with this for next year and thinking about this in terms of budgeting and feed into the budget process as opposed to an immediate decision as to whether these skips are happening now or not, I would suggest.
Councillor Taylor? And then councillor Prowse?
Thank you Chair, yes, as councillor Wrigley points out, we do pay two thirds of the three skips or three quarters of the four. We'd have had the four, but we've actually had none, so we've paid but we've received no service this year. So yes, we should be getting a refund. My view is that we should continue with the two or perhaps three skip services, skips in next year. I think it's very popular here, particularly because it's a 10, I think 11, 12 mile, 11 or 12 mile journey to Newton Abbot skip or to Exeter skip, where we are allowed to go. I know that Torbay residents aren't allowed to use the tip in Newton Abbot, but we're allowed to use it on Exeter, which seems rather fair on Torbay, but there you go, or Exeter. But yes, it is very popular and because of our geographical situation, and I guess it's the same with Bobby Tracy and a lot of rural parishes, I would like to see the collections continue here. Because despite some of the arguments made, I think what's behind this is that Devon County Council no longer support the service. So it may be that the costs which are identified separately in this report as being paid for by Devon County Council, we would need to establish whether in fact there would be additional costs from that side that might have an influence in how much of a service we carry forward. But from my point of view, I don't know how other members feel, I would like us to continue the service as was and if needs be to contribute extra towards the one skip service that was provided by Teambridge to Dawlish.
Councillor Prowse, I think you wish to speak.
Right, yes I quite agree, actually I agree that there should be four. I certainly agree that there ought to be one in the car park at Coronation Avenue, having fought so hard to keep that car park there when it's teen housing wanted to build on it. I certainly think that it needs to be used in every way and I do keep a check on that and I notice it is well used, so I do think we ought to have a skip that way. We are trying to be green. Going in and out of Newton Abbot with all your rubbish is not the best thing. And if by any chance you forget to take anything with you that proves your address, you won't get in, because you have to be able to prove your address when you go into it. What concerns me even more in view of the present day, and this is taking on what goes on outside when you have paid money before Covid and from the lack of response that we have had from Teambridge on the various matters that councillor Wrigley wants to know about, I'm concerned about the amount of money that we might possibly have already paid. I don't want it just carried over to next year to something that might not happen. If we've paid that money, I would like it back in our coffers with us having the right to repay it to Teambridge next year if we do. Not, well we'll keep your money, as a voucher system is what is happening in the big wide world out there. Well, I don't think Dawlish wants a voucher system with Teambridge. If they've got our money, we need to have it back so that we can spend it how we want, because it may be. that Teambridge doesn't actually give us this asset and we might have to look out elsewhere to have it. I think it's something that our residents actually are entitled to. And when it was taken away in the first place, because we used to have it a lot more times than this, there was a big outcry about it. So please, can we have the system? But if they've got our money, we don't want to voucher, we want our money back.
Would anyone else like to contribute? Yes, councillor Dawson?
I can totally see why reductions and why there has to be cuts and things like that. They've lost an awful lot of money. But something that I did notice from the scrutiny meeting, which I'm glad I was forwarded because I had a great evening watching that last night. But something that I did kind of pick up on, there wasn't a general assumption that town councils wouldn't have lost out on money or perhaps have saved money. And that's obviously not the case for our council. We have lost a lot of money due to rent, rental income and stuff like that. So ideally, in an ideal world, yes, you'd want to maintain the whole service and increase it if there's a demand there from our residents. But I'm just also a bit cautious. So I don't think we really know the full extent of our financial loss either. So in an ideal world, absolutely maintain it, increase it if there's demand. I'd need to know more information as well about the costs, especially if we won't be able to get such good discounts and things like that.
Thank you. Did you want to speak, councillor Lather?
Good. Just a comment. I spent a happy couple of hours listening to the report, the video yesterday. And I was just amazed that at the whole meeting, it just threw me completely. The fact that the what is it called, overview and scrutiny?
Yes.
Committee? It had the money that was put aside for skips taken from them and it was put into the general fund. And because they were asking, where has the money gone? They had no money in their coffers anymore. It had been taken and put into because they said it's gone into savings. So we know that it's not going to happen this year. They did mention about, as councillor Wrigley said, they did mention about social distancing and all this, that and the other. But they did mention, and I'm sure they took a vote on it, to have discussions with other parishes and to find out and work together to see what can be done. But I wouldn't hold your breath at getting anything from Timbridge from this moment to that meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The councillor Maine and councillor Foden, do you wish to say anything? You haven't taken part as yet, no? Could I just draw something together? It seems to me that we are saying that we've put money in and we want it back. That seems to me that we could perhaps use it for some kind of reduced service even this year, because it was out of this year's budget. I suggest that we consider, we're talking of four services, but maybe initially we might have to halve it and have one in each ward or something and then alternate the next year. There are different ways to think of it, depending on what money there will be. So if you could bear those things in mind. Yes, I am. I've seen you waving councillor Lather. I'm coming back to you now. It says to consider the report and determine the level of service the council wishes to offer. And then you see it would have to go to F and G P. And I suggested F and G P cannot make a final decision until we know whether we're getting that six thousand pounds back. So I'm just putting this into the arena for you to think about. Yes, councillor Lather.
It was just the one thing that they were quite adamant, that they didn't think these skip things could take place because of social distancing. And when you think about it, it most probably is a problem for this year.
Yes, I think, could I just ask you, Angie? Off the top of your head, presumably people could book in a slot to bring something.
Chair, I guess they could. You'd obviously need to administer such a scheme. And if you have an open skip arrangement where it's advertised it's going to happen, then obviously people still could turn up on spec. So I think, as with any Covid secure thing at the moment, you'd have to have quite a robust risk assessment and arrangements in place. And you may find, for example, I don't know about Coronation Avenue, but you may find, for example, you needed more space to ensure the sort of waiting that you might get, which normally would be a very quick process, but it wouldn't if you've got a queue and have a time slot. I'm not saying it's not possible, because Devon County have got open, they're obviously their waste centres, but I think it could require a lot of thought and admin.
Yes, councillor Prowse. You're muted.
I can see this is a big issue. So the proposal I'm going to make is quite basic, especially as the chairman of F and G is here. I am proposing that we follow the money trail and find out where the six thousand pounds is. And if it has gone to Teambridge, and I'm sure the books will show us that, the finance officer would also know, and that we request the money back this year and we take it from there. That basically is, I think, we need to have the money back here for us to make a decision or to put a proposal to anybody, either the other, you know, like Bobby and some of the others. But we need to get our money back. It's no good wanting things if you can't afford them. And if there's six thousand pounds floating somewhere that isn't in our coffers, we need it back.
Could I, I'm coming to you councillor Lather. Could I just refer us to this, that the decision we need to make is the level of service we would like. I think then it will be up to, as you were saying, following the trail of the money and F and G P, finding out what and when could be afforded as just an on-the-top. Councillor Lather, then councillor Wrigley.
I was just going to second the proposal. There's a proposal on the table.
Determine that, yes. And the proposal again, please.
As we further.
You're unmuted councillor Prowse. You've just unmuted yourself, just unmuting you councillor Prowse. Can you, could you unmute yourself? Thank you.
Can you hear me now? Councillor Wrigley, I think, was going to respond and most probably say something of great depth about that. So perhaps you'd like to speak councillor Wrigley and tell us why we can't follow the money trail.
You're very kind. I think there's two things here. First one is absolutely yes, we need to reclaim as much as possible of the money we might have paid in advance for services that we haven't received. And that is not unreasonable at all. But I think secondarily, we need to look at putting into the budget for next year the sort of amount that we want for a level of service that we're going to be looking for for next year. So that is not dependent on getting a refund from this year's service, because we would already be paying out another six thousand for next year's service. So the question really is, from this committee, is are we going to be asking F and G P for the full eight thousand or whatever it is, for a full service as we have at the moment? Or are we going to be sticking with something like the six thousand and whatever service we can make up out of that sort of level of money? What sort of level of service are we looking at? I've heard from around the table that we want to keep the four different sites. I'm unclear in my memory how many times the skip comes to each site and how long it's there for. You can, for example, do a day or a half day. You can do it once a year, you can do it twice a year. So there's a number of variables in designing the service. And I don't think we can make a final decision here until we know what the costs are going to look like. But I think the action coming out of this is to work with other parishes and towns in Teambridge to get an efficient service, to then design a service that covers all four areas and to figure out what that price might be to put into next year's budget, along with trying to reclaim the six thousand that we haven't had service from for this year.
Could I just say that we are just simply being asked to determine the level of service we wish to offer? And that then we refer that to the appropriate committee, which has obviously would be F and G P, which deals with all the money, rebates, whatever else. Councillor Lather, did you have your hand up before?
I did.
I'm to you councillor Maine.
I think during lockdown, everybody. Sorry?
Councillor Lather speaking, then I'll come to councillor Maine, then councillor Wrigley.
Yeah, it was just a note that I have got twelve thousand pounds down by the looks of it, for the four skips. This is what Angie reported. By the time you take the other costs into it, it came to about twelve thousand pounds. Am I right?
Chairman, if I may, I mean, if you add up the in the table, the TDC cost, which is the containers and the associated staffing, that comes to eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine. And then if you add on what Coronation Avenue would have cost, which was three thousand fifty-two, you get near twelve thousand, as councillor Lather has just said. However, that excludes those costs that are covered by DCC. And we don't know whether they would still cover that disposal from the tonnage taken away.
So it could be more.
So potentially you've got a cost of, as councillor Lather was saying, nearly twelve for the four skips. If you then include the disposal costs, there's obviously another one thousand six hundred that would need to be added on to that nearly twelve thousand figure.
It was just clarity, that was all.
Councillor Wrigley said he wasn't sure how often and whatever. As far as I'm aware, it's been once a year at the Barton Car Park, Dawlish Warren, and, oh gosh, Sandy Lane. We've only had one as yet at Coronation Avenue because it's sort of slipped between the planks and with Covid. But it should be included, it is just as important there. Councillor Maine? And then I'll come to you councillor Taylor.
Thank you. During lockdown, everybody took on a project of building something in their garden or cleaning out the garage or cleaning out the loft. And there's been a big increase in fly tipping. I mean, I've I've got a Facebook page that I follow around Ashcombe. And I feel so sorry for the landowners up there because they're forever clearing out their fields. I think we need to go for the maximum that we can go for next year, because people are just their garages are going to be bursting if they've got a garage. And I think we need to go for the highest amount of skips that we can get. And I think it's very important we get our money back. And this isn't really where we should be setting how much money we want to spend next year. But we need to put it when we go to F and G P or budget setting, whatever it is, that we need the highest amount of skips we can get. Thank you.
Councillor Taylor?
If that's a proposal by councillor Maine to go for four skips.
There was already a proposal on the table from councillor Prowse.
Well, I agree, but that's not the same proposal. So if that is the proposal to go for four skips and to ensure that we get to get our refund, then I would be happily second that.
Has councillor Prowse's proposal got a second, please?
Councillor, chairman, I think councillor Prowse wishes to speak.
Yes. Angie muted again.
Yep.
We're there now councillor Prowse.
Can you hear me now? What councillor Taylor is suggesting, we could put together with my proposal, which is the four skips, we're still following the money trail, which I happen to think is very important. And councillor Lather seconded my original proposal. If she's happy to second that again, I will take on what you have said councillor Taylor, and that will be the proposal.
So could you just repeat that proposal so that we're all clear, please councillor Prowse?
Well, we're going for four skips as many times as we can get them. And we are looking to get a refund on our money that has already been paid to Teambridge.
And that's seconded by councillor Lather. All those in favour, please? Unanimous. Right, well, that was well discussed and well thought out. Thank you. We have one more item. We're doing well for time. And this is to do with the skate park. It's an update from our projects officer Angie.
Thank you, chairman. Just to say that the fence at the skate park has been repaired. It's gone back up again. It has actually been painted, not by the town council, but we think some local people have painted the inside. Potentially, we're slightly concerned that it may be graffitied. We are aware that in repairing the fence and putting it back up again, we're actually over budget on the actual repairs for the skate park. So that has happened, but it needed to be done. And it's now all in place.
Thank you. Would anyone like to add anything to that? We do still have something in the budget, not the full amount, but towards making the slope, I don't know what you call that now, into a solid structure. And that needs to be brought forward, added to with luck in the forthcoming budget, so that can happen as early as possible. Right. I think if everyone is happy that.
Can you just note the report?
Yes, we need to note the update. Are you happy to note that, please? Thank you. And it looks as if we've come to the end of the meeting. Oh, sorry, councillor Lather, you wish to speak?
Yeah, it's again, just to comment. It did get spoken about, about having the working group looking at the lights. So did we note that? Because it was mentioned. And councillor Prowse, I think, said that she would be happy to get into it. I would be happy to.
I don't think it was made as a proposal.
No, it was a comment.
The proposal was that it would come as soon as possible next year on the agenda of CAC, so it could be progressed.
Okay.
We can do that then. Is everyone happy? That seems to me a very satisfactory meeting. We've got through a lot here. Some good news, some not so good news, but let's hope. And we're looking to you councillor Wrigley to chase up Timbridge District Council for some answers so that we can light up our lovely town for Christmas. Yes, councillor Maine?
This actually is aimed at councillor Taylor and councillor Wrigley, because you've both been in Teambridge. What happens if it's gone into savings? The money that we've paid, will we get it back? Can they draw it back out of savings for us?
Sorry, that's, it's just a term, don't worry. It's not disappeared, it's not been put into a piggy bank over there and removed. It's just, the money is still there, so it's not a problem.
So we will be able to get it back?
Well, it depends on where things are, but if the money has been moved into quote unquote savings, it just means it's been released from one budget. If we paid money and we haven't received the service and we can get it back, then we should be able to get it back. But I will have to chase that one up.
Okay. I think we need to drop that one now, because we've gone through the agenda items. We can talk about it after. But I think we need to actually close the meeting formally now. It is twelve minutes past eight. We've done very well. You're welcome to stop and chat afterwards. Is that correct, Angie?
Yep, I've stopped live streaming and I've now stopped.